All right, we reconvene from recess and it is two twelve. I'd like to go back to fifteen B on our executive session item. And the chair will move to assign legal representation on behalf of Denton County, Texas, to the Denton County Criminal District Attorney's Office, Civil Division, in State Office of Administrative Hearings, docket number five eight two two four one five six four six, styled application for the creation of White Oaks Municipal Utility District of Denton County, currently pending before the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and the State Office of Administrative Hearings. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So there, Bianca, there's that. All right, there will be no action on fifteen A. There'll be no action today. We did fifteen B. There'll be no action today on fifteen C. Let's go back to our remaining agenda item today, which is, there's our seven K, which is approval, the approval of any appropriate action related to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Denton County budget. And I'll hand it off to Alejandro. Where is he? There he is.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. You should have with you a green binder as well as a white binder. So if you would please turn to tab, to the second tab, which is the July thirtieth tab, you will see an agenda listing all of the items that we have for discussion today. And on the green binder, the green binder includes the financial impact for the appeals for today as well. So for, on the agenda itself, as part of the white binder, you'll see that there are three appeals listed, as well as several discussion items for today's agenda.
Okay. All right, so our first one is item one, which is from the constables offices. And do you want to go ahead and outline that? And we'll be, we do have our constables here. We appreciate y'all being here today. It's good to see y'all. And we'll go ahead and hear from them. But do you want to go ahead and outline?
Yes, Judge. So you do have the financial impact for the appeal for the constables offices on the first page of the green binder, which is a financial impact of seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty-four for the reclass appeal. And this is an appeal from the constables for the reclassification for all administrative specialists, two positions from a grade five to administrative specialist threes, grade six.
Okay. All right, which, do we have a representative, Doug? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Judge, thank you for giving us this time.
You bet. Make sure that's, yeah, be sure to speak into that.
I gotta kind of speak for the entire constable offices, if that's all right with you all.
Perfect, yes, sir.
So we are appealing the reclassification from a two to a three. All the constables offices administratively are pretty much set up the same. We have an administrative manager and we have a specialist two. When administrative managers, vacation, sick, extended leave, all the responsibilities fall to the administrative two. So their job responsibilities and functions kind of mirror each other. So the office continues to run when one's out of, excuse me, one of them's out of the office. This isn't a ploy to get any one individual a raise. What it's about is reclassifying our position based on job duties and responsibilities that we require from that position in the constable's office. I think in your packet, you'll have a sheet that outlines administrative specialist threes positions and their duties highlighted or required from our administrative two position and duties they are already doing.
Okay.
Under the administrative three. Next, you'll have a sheet that shows other departments that have a administrative three position and their job duties and requirements. Again, our administrative two position is doing, inquired to do those duties. Also in the packet, you should have other examples of why we feel like this is justified in reclassifying the position. Kind of sum it up. Our administrative two position is doing the job duties and responsibilities that are listed by human resources for administrative three position. At minimum, they're doing those job duties. Last thing I'll say is, you know, this, the reclassification form is available during budget time for a reason. And we strongly believe this situation fits that reason.
I'd like to just take a moment to say thank y'all for letting us come up here where the air conditioning is working. It's much warmer in my building right now. So this was a much needed break from the heat. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know we've provided documentation about what the job itself, what they do, what I would go one step further than maybe Doug did in saying that I think daily, I know at my office, daily, my admin two performs the exact same duties as my administrative manager. Not just because my manager may be out of the office, you know, temporarily for the day, running to the, to get mail or whatever, but it's, it's constantly, they're tag teaming the whole agenda for the office. So there's a huge disparity between those two ranks. And I agree with Doug. I think this is a no-brainer as far as the job description is specifically laid out for admin three, and that's what they do daily.
How many individuals are we talking about that would be affected by this?
Six. Six total for one in each office.
One in each office, okay.
What is the other position that's in the office?
Administrative manager.
Administrative manager. And what is their, what is their scale? What is their classification?
Their pay skill, their pay skill's a nine.
It's a nine?
It's a nine and a five, right? Nine and five? Judge, do you mind if I?
Yeah, go right ahead. Go ahead, man. Better nine.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. First off, I really appreciate all of you being here. I think it's great to have you all as a, united in something. I worked at the constable's office at one point and it wasn't that way. And I think it's great that you guys are doing things all together. Such an important part for me. And I also appreciate the opportunity that you brought and we met and had some discussions. And I appreciate that, too. I think that's a, that was definitely wise on both sides of our, our part to be able to have that discussion and understand. I think you both make the point that I'm about to, to bring is, is you've got two people in that office that really do exactly the same job duties, quite frankly. Now, you may have, your manager may do a little more, but it's very slight, okay? Because I remember I worked in those offices for six years. And when one was out and we had some out for a long period of time, it all fell upon the other one and/or your chief deputy, okay? And for me and the suggestion I think I gave before, just maybe a little bit different, was I think you're gonna have to look at both positions. And you're gonna have to get both of those positions more in line because they do have, as you both have said, not only the job title, but what their jobs are. And if you look at the descriptions of the job, they both do those things. So really, if you're just talking about bringing them up one pay scale, that's not even really acceptable in my mind if you're both, if they're both doing it. I think you're gonna have to look at where you maybe collapse those two job titles into one job title, and you're gonna have a difference of pay based on whatever comes up with, that we, we come up with from the description of that individual's longevity, whatever it may be, however you decide. And quite frankly, I think the chief deputy is the one that should be, is the manager of your office when you're not there, right? That's who runs your day-to-day most, not all, but runs the, the office for a lot of guys. And so that person can really supervise both of those individuals because they do. So I, I'm just trying to figure out, and again, I'm not saying this is how it should be done, but really, do you need a supervisor in that position? Do one need to be supervising the other, really? Because the chief deputy is really who supervises your whole office. So my, my opinion is, is that you need to look at both of those positions, bringing, I'm not saying taking money away from anybody because that, that is the last thing we're talking about. But your manager's position, and I'm saying manager, three, I guess is what it is, and your one, or both lead doing the same thing, there's just definitely a pay disparity, right? So we need to try to figure out how we get that closer and make everybody happy. And in the future, because you guys didn't cause this issue, this started a long time ago, you guys have all been elected and you're dealing with what's occurred. I think that we need to look at a different way of doing it going forward. And the, the compensation study and, and job descriptions that we're gonna be doing here in the very near future, I think will show exactly what you're saying because you're gonna get an opportunity to not only fill out what those job duties are, but so will that employee. And you'll get a look at them and go, yep, that's what they do. And it's gonna show that they're both doing the same thing. So we're gonna have to come up with something that takes care of both employees, not just raising one, one pay grade. Okay? I didn't answer your question as far as whether I agree or not. I'm just telling you kind of how I see it.
We, I certainly understand your, your position. And I think that the reason we're here is not to advocate, like Doug said, for one employee over another. That's always a difficult position to be in where you're trying to help one employee. I think what we recognized was that we're not asking for anything other than appropriate classification for the position that exists. We're not saying that they should get the same as the manager or not. I mean, I understand sometimes you gotta have a differentiation in an office about who is in charge of, you know, if no one, no, the chief deputy's not there and I happen to not be in the office at the time, who is kind of in charge. I think more importantly, our position is that we just know that an admin three is, I mean, that's where they are. That's what they do. And I think by the own, the standards that already exist for the county, it's, to us, it was like, yeah, this is where they should be. They just have been misclassified to begin with.
Fair enough.
Commissioner Mitchell?
That extra position was created when I was working for Jerry, for the constable's office, the extra position to help the person that was the administrator that was there. I understand where you're coming from. Like Ryan, we're all doing a salary compensation study. And I would hate for us to reclassify this job at this time. And then at that time, we decided it needs to be higher or, or whatever we decide. Certainly not taking any money from anyone. I'm in agreement that anytime you have two people in the office when one is gone, we've got, happen to have two people in our offices with Teresa and our new person, Amy. And they, when Teresa's gone, the second person has to do the job. She doesn't do it every day, but she has to do the job. So I, you know, I understand that. So the problem is, is the, the current job description that we need to look at and see if we need to change their current job description. But we need to do that all when we do the compensation study. And I know everybody's saying, we can't wait, we can't wait. But I think you'll probably be in better shape if we wait till we do this compensation study. So for that reason, I'm not gonna be in favor of doing it at this time. If it says we need to do it with the compensation study, yes, sir, I will certainly be in favor of that.
Anyone else?
When is that compensation study?
We're going through that process right now. As far as figuring out the, the firm that we, that will be recommended, obviously, still has to be approved.
And I don't anticipate us doing all the, every position in the whole county, but some of these that have had, that have had, that have come forward, obviously would be a priority to look at, Kevin.
I, I just wanted to thank you all for coming in, too. And I, I think I'm, well, I, I agree with both of my colleagues' comments. And I do think we want to really make sure that we really have it set up right. And I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that then we may think, hey, we need to, we need to reorg this. And we, we do not want to, to cut pay anywhere, right? So that's one of the things that we just want to make sure that we're leaving enough flexibility that we can make sure we're getting that.
So what would be so awful if we were to grant this now and then the compensation study gets done and find out maybe we need to increase it even another level? I don't see what's, what's wrong with that.
I think that's, I think that's-
If it says that, that, that's, that's an okay outcome. The thing that you can't go back, I don't think we can go backwards on is if it says, oh, that was the right compensation or whatever. We don't want to, we don't want to, I, I don't think that we want to do anything where we start cutting people's pay on, based on the compensation study.
And, and in addition to that, Kevin, everybody in the county just about is asking for classification if they haven't asked now. So if we grant this classification, what's keep from, what is keeping someone else from saying, well, you granted the constables do hours before the compensation study. And I just want to make sure that we do a clear compensation study for the ones that are asking and not piecemeal it here and there.
Right.
I, I guess my point would be that y'all came up with this years and years and years ago.
Right.
This pay scale.
Right.
Right? So it's already behind.
Okay.
So I believe, Commissioner Ennis, and if, if we give them their reclassification because that's the job they are doing based on human resource, that's what they're doing. There's no way with inflation and everything else, your study is gonna come back and say they're getting paid too much. They're not making enough now. You're talking-
I, I, and I appreciate the fact that you're advocating for your people. We've got, we've got other, other folks' departments that are actually a lower grade than this that are saying theirs are exactly that same situation. And it's-
It's not just one department.
It's, it's a-
You take each one separately and you look at it and then you decide. I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know, you, last year, what was it, ten, fourteen percent raise for law enforcement? That, that deserves some, some, some maybe not so much. But you didn't give it to everybody.
Last year, we weren't doing a compensation study.
Well, but I'm-
And we're about to do one. And until it gets done, I think we need to wait before we start piecemealing everyone that needs a, a new classification. And that's my, that's my opinion. And that's just one opinion.
Well, in constable, I, I totally appreciate where you're coming from. But I do want to make one thing really clear from the standpoint of the fourteen percent raise. One of our biggest duties here is the public safety.
I know.
And that's why we made sure to take care of our law enforcement.
And I agree with it. Hundred percent, I agree with it.
So, so, so I just, well, I just want to make sure-
Right.
That is totally separate from anything else that goes on in here, in my opinion.
I understand.
Okay? And I think the citizens would agree. They would much rather have a officer available than not based on some money. So-
You took it the wrong, I agree one hundred percent. I guess where I looked at it is, some of the raises alone, just the raise alone was a third of what this position pays for a year.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's just a little- Everybody gets, I can feel your frustration. Don't blame you at all. Totally understand it. Quite frankly-
I call police, too, obviously.
No, absolutely. Well, but quite frankly, the way you guys present it and the facts, it looks like they should be getting paid the exact same thing almost as what your other person is. So really, you're, you're, what I think, what he's leading to, because we've had discussions about this, yes, it probably will come in no matter what, probably maybe higher than where you are. I don't know that. We haven't looked at the study to that. We haven't, this is not gonna be our decision up here, by the way. That study's gonna be done by a third party, which is what's important. We're gonna all have input and then we're gonna go by what they give us. But at the end of the day, what I think we're trying to prevent is a onslaught of everybody saying, we need this one pay grade right now. And then we go through the compensation study and then either we need more pay grades, they need more pay for that position, or they're right where they need to be, or in some cases, they may be paid a hundred percent of what is going on within the economy of other, of other studies that they do. So it's a tough spot for everybody involved.
Yes.
And we appreciate your understa, we appreciate where you're standing.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Man, I don't want to, if this is the case, really, why put that form out there? Why is that available at budget time to go through the steps?
I agree. I agree. It shouldn't be. I agree. It shouldn't be.
Well, I will say this, there's-
Take it out.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Doug, so the, there's many factors that go into looking at this. If you, if you wanted to reference the law enforcement last year, that's looking at internal, where we're at, where we're internally, where we are in the marketplace with our other cities and so forth comparable, and what is the market demand and the vacancies that we have when you're looking at the significant recruiting challenges that we have. And so that is one of the things. So looking at a position like this, that is not just, for internal equity, you look at not only within your department, but how does that position rank with other administrative functions and other departments across the county and the clerk's offices and other places and so on. I mean, it, so has many, many tentacles, for lack of a better term, and ramifications looking at countywide and how that fits besides just beyond y'all's. And your job is to advocate for your people. And I totally, totally appreciate that and, and sympathize with you on that. So-
Can I just add one short thing? Is it, because I really do appreciate, but I just want to also kind of look at it from the perspective of where we are, is that something you're talking about is, hey, this was done years ago. Well, we as a court, I think it's been known, it's been a little behind the curve, but we've done pretty significant raises across the board now for-
Years.
Years, right? And we're trying to catch up. But I, I want you to always remember that we aren't, that it isn't, it is kind of a net zero game, right? I mean, so that anytime we're, if we're, if we're taking and doing more for one group, which may be valid, but that means for the whole, which we, I think we're still all very committed this year to doing something healthy for the entire group. And by, by the way, I think we, we really want to push that. Is it, so it's, it's something where every time, it's not just like, well, we, we have to, we have to weigh that, too, right? Is weigh the whole and how we can get the entire organization where it needs to be. And so that's, that's the other thing that we're having to, to deal with. And is, and that's why the compensation study, I think, is, we keep saying it, is that we need some real data so that we don't just know that we're behind. But, but I will tell you this, is that, other than that public safety, is that our, our, our retention is relatively good across the organization. So it's, you know, it's, that's an important piece. But anyway.
Gustavo, where are we at, this, these positions at the marketplace?
Last time I reviewed these, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, we were close to one hundred percent of market.
We were what?
One hundred percent of market.
Okay.
Judge, excuse me, but I'm confused about this compensation study. Has it started?
No, because you haven't approved it.
We have to approve it.
Okay, when can we do that?
Well, we have a process we have to go through, just like anything else that happens. So we're going through that process. We've interviewed six, six companies.
Thursday.
We've got some questions. We need to send them. They'll have to respond to, and then they'll get ranked. And then obviously, the group will present to ourselves and we make a decision. And then obviously, it's based on availability for whoever to get started. But they, from what I understand, it's about a six to nine month, depending on the, the departments we choose to start off with at first. Because they realize this is a, we're gonna do a certain amount of, of departments first, or it's not a countywide right off the bat, which is what we've asked for.
Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it looks to me like then we're talking almost a year-
Yes, ma'am.
-before we would have any results. And so we're asking you and anybody else who's requesting something to wait a full year. I just want to make sure I've got all the parameters right.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would suggest that we, we had talked about that before, doing this in pieces. And so we wanted, we did a big significant improvement last year on the law enforcement. So that might not be something we look at originally, just some of the administrative positions. You make those a first priority and bracket that out in pieces.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Judge. Do you mind if I say something real quick?
Sure.
The tough thing is, is it's important to every department, right?
Mm-hmm.
For us to do this, this study. So we've got four, I think four, that have been kind of discussed. And now what's gonna happen is that four is gonna grow to five, six, seven. And so I, I'm just going by the direction that I was given from when we started this about how the compensation study was wanted, was, was being asked to put together. And that's all we've bid is for the first part of it, not for the, for a, you know, so many sec, there's only so many departments that we've, we've covered, if that makes sense. So unfortunately, we can't just keep, and I'm not saying yours is not or whatever, but every time somebody wants, if they, everybody wants to be put on it now, right? Because they want to make sure that their department's being taken care of. So that's something we're gonna have to discuss, obviously.
And if we keep on changing classifications and pay grade, every time someone come in, there will be no need for the compensation study because everybody will have what they want.
Well, sure.
And that is not, that is not...
That's not the goal.
That's not the goal. The goal is make sure that everybody's paid fairly and according to their classification, and that's what we're trying to do. And we can't do it piecemealing, and you're not the only persons that I've said that to. I say that to everybody that come in, because everybody's asking for, "Do it now, do it now, do it now." And if we do it now, do it now, why are we paying all this money for the compensation study?
I would just like to, first of all, before we are done, I just want to make sure y'all understand. We are 100% respect the position you're in. We understand it's not just our offices. We live in our own little bubbles. But with that said, our position is the same, in the fact that the person does the job that's listed in the manual, and we're not asking to ignore a study. And I know everybody wants to be on the study. I went through it, you know, 22 years. I probably did five of them at Denton PD, and you can never implement. You don't have the funding to implement what comes up. And so, everybody's trying to get in line. I feel like us as a constable, there's six of us here today, as well as chief deputies, because we believe that our admin twos are not just doing this job, but they are vital to maintain the status of the office, okay? And it's not if my admin manager is out. It is on the day-to-day operations. You know, when this was set up, Commissioner, it was a long time ago, where you added one, and there is tremendous growth. Every department's feeling it, right? We're all seeing it, and we're empathetic to that. But we want to express nothing but respect for the decisions y'all have to make. We just think, from looking at it, the reason we collectively decided this was the one thing we were going to do, is it $17,000 countywide. I mean, that's all we're asking for. And it will send a message to these employees that we will compensate you for what you're doing, which is what we said we will do. If it comes back that they deserve more, I agree with Commissioner Edmison. You can always revisit that, but we're not even asking for that. We're just asking to compensate them for what the current market says. Again, these studies, a year, I hope it takes a year. That would be pretty expedient, based on my experience with those studies. However, that's just another year that our person is doing without something that they are entitled to, based on the description from there, as far as the job duties. So, but we do respect, and we understand it's a very difficult decision.
My suggestion, Judge, is that we take a look at that job description.
That's why we're doing this big study, because I think a lot of the job... Oh, yeah, no, I get it.
That has been the issue for a long time. The job descriptions are very similar to each other. So, anybody that comes in and reviews that job description is going to say, "Okay, my employee is doing this. It fits on the higher pay grade." Nobody's going to come and say, "No, mine is in the lower end."
Right.
And I'm not arguing with them any one way or another. It's just, that has always been my concern with the job description. It's too generic, and...
Well, this is why I've said, this should have already been, some of these things should have already been done by HR, and not have to go out and have a firm to do some things that we know about already.
Well, we've specifically asked the firms that, and gave them some of our concern, the issues that we have as a county when it comes to the job descriptions and things of that nature. And I think it's, a lot of times, it's easy for a firm to come in and just try to lump them together, because it makes it quicker and easier. And what we've asked directly is, that's not, we want to make sure we separate these out as best we possibly can. So, when a group like you come in, that's just six, and we say, "Yep, you're absolutely right, da-da." We go with it. Well, there's not another 60 lined up over here that have the same job description that goes across the county in a totally different division. That's what we're dealing with.
Right, that's what I'm...
That's what happens in multiple places. So, it's not just your six, and I don't mean it like yours. It's not just the wonderful people that are helping you run your office on a day-to-day basis in the 17,000. It's the other 30, 60, that will be hundreds of thousands. And so, that's what we have to look at from this perspective. And I appreciate you understanding that, obviously.
If there's any, I look through, unless there's some hidden positions I could not find in any of the structure, I think there are nine of these positions countywide that has this title. I think three of them exist at the sheriff's department, and then each of the constable has one. Like, that's the only three in the entire county.
I have a few admins in my office.
You have some admin twos also?
Yeah. Yeah, there's more.
It's all over the county. That's the reason why we don't want to piecemeal it.
Right.
It needs to be corrected.
It needs to be like what you just, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
But, yeah, it needs to be more specific to your job area. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, for example, we're law enforcement, like you say.
Yes, sir.
Since they got the Mark 43 system in, we just went through CGIS audits, and they are now suggesting, recommending, it's probably going to happen, that our clerks, our admin ladies, because they see what's on the computers, they have to go through that training. They have to go through the CGIS training, awareness training, you know? So, there's, as legislation state changes, and more's put on constable offices, the forms we got to fill out, the T code and the state reporting forms.
Yes, sir.
More gets pushed, and it's just, I mean, I don't know what else to say. They deserve that one grade up, just based on what the county has in place now. I mean, right now.
Yes, sir.
They're doing it above it. I can't say anymore. I mean...
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for being here.
Control what they do.
Ma'am?
Your office is controlled what they do.
What do you mean controlled?
How much work they do, and who does what in your office. You're in control of that.
You're exactly right, and I expect a lot of them, and they will continue to do what they're doing.
Right. But I mean, what each, what each person does. You're in control of what each person does.
They're going to do this. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's what I mean. I don't mean they don't work.
Yes, ma'am.
Been there, so I know they work.
You're talking about the division of duties.
Uh-huh, division of duties, yeah. Yeah.
Judge, one thing that occurs to me, and I hate to be a maverick here, but this time next year, we'll be doing the same thing. We'll be doing a budget. And at that point, if our compensation study has shown that there are more adjustments that need to be made, I'm very open to hearing about them at that time. In the meantime, I really hate to ask that y'all wait a whole year, because I understand and I agree with what you're saying. If they're doing the same job, let's do what we can to try to more equalize it. I agree, we can't cut one down and then lift the other one up, but that's not what you're asking for. So, sorry, I just, I'm going to support them on this.
Kevin Wright.
Okay, thank y'all for being here.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I don't anticipate us taking action really on many of these things today. We're going to look at every, want to hear everybody out in the totality, and then we'll come back.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
And we'll make the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, constable. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. We do appreciate it. Yes, thank you, ma'am.
All right, next is reorganization.
Yes, Judge. Next on the agenda is a request from emergency management for a reorganization, which will include a job title change, two new positions, and the deletion of two positions. And it should be basically cost neutral for the reorganization. But I think Samantha is going to present a couple of different options for this reorg request. And also, as part of your package, there's an appeals and revision tab. So, if you turn to page A20 under that tab, you'll see a couple of org charts that Samantha has submitted as part of her request.
Good morning. Good afternoon. I'm going to say that all day.
Thank you for having me, Judge and Commissioners. So, this isn't really too much of an appeal, but just a reorg, and a perfect timing that we're going through this process right now. I understand we're trying to work within a budget, keeping it balanced, and trying to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. But we're just trying to reorganize our office, to keep it efficient, reclassify one of the positions that is more applicable to the job descriptions of what we ask one of our assistants to do. So, there's two options here. One would be a pay grade 17 with a $10,000 net savings, and then a pay grade 18, depending on what option, what we choose, which would be a 2,000 net savings. To get that savings, what we'll do is, we do have one EM officer that got poached from our office that we're really sad to lose, but this is an opportunity to get more boots on the ground, hire just one level below, and then keep our assistant specialist, my vacant position from before, and just kind of reorganize it to keep it a little bit more balanced of not too many, you know, leadership positions based to boots-on-the-ground level. So, what we're asking is, Mark Boland, he is to be the deputy director. In my absence, he will be taking place. He already works with me quite a bit, and he understands if I do step out, he is able and capable of taking the job, the role to stand up in my place if I am gone. He is second-in-command in our office, and will work with another assistant to get them on board if we go through the line of succession. So... But at this moment, yeah, as you can see here, where we're currently at for the organization structure, we do have two positions out of 15. We're going to be asking one be a 17. We'll reduce an EM officer two, or a senior specialist, and then make that an EM officer one.
Okay. Members, do we have any questions? Samantha?
Judge.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I just want to thank you for your work as you're taking on this to really look at how that your organization is set up, and keeping our dollars in mind, and I'm supportive of it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for today? All right, thank you. We'll take this under consideration. Thank you.
Sorry, it's not a question.
Yes, ma'am.
But Samantha, I just want to congratulate you. Your timing has been really exquisite on all this. And I know it isn't your timing, but you were in place for such a time as this. So, thank you for what you're doing, and you've presented a very clear picture of what you mean.
I appreciate y'all's support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Okay, Judge. Next on the agenda is, as part of the recommended budget, we included a new position for public health, which was an epidemiologist two at the pay grade recommended by HR, which was a pay grade 13. And public health is requesting to reclassify that or classify it as a grade 14 instead of a 13, which is HR's recommendation.
Okay. Good afternoon, Dr. Richardson.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I want to say something that's already been said, so that's easy, right? And it's, I want to thank you, oh, Bobby, let's see, maybe, oh, it still works. All right. I just want to thank you for listening to appeals. There's no law that says you have to hear from department heads about appealing a budget decision. I know that's a privilege. I just want to say thank you. You don't have to hold these, and we appreciate it. I submitted a memo. I want to remind the court that we don't do this a lot in public health. We don't appeal a lot of budget things. In fact, I think this is my second time in 10 years to come to an appeal. One came two years ago for an ME position that we needed to advocate for.
Yeah.
We appreciated that, but I think this is maybe my second time in 10 years. This is a bit rare for us, which emphasizes, I think, our priority. I have some information to show, but I'm going to try to encapsulate it. Very much appreciate Budget and Human Resources for approving and recommending, recommending in this budget for you, a new position, epidemiologist two. In our memo, I noted several things. We talk a lot about the position and the pay. We talk about turnover, some of the things you've already heard from other departments today. But just kind of showing you, compared to Collin, Dallas, and Tarrant, if you see the chart, we have four and a half FTEs. One of those individuals is a half FTE with one. So, actually, the Assistant Director of Public Health is serving as a half FTE as Chief Epidemiologist. So, we're sharing one as an Assistant Director and a Chief Epidemiologist. You see, Collin County has 10. You see Dallas and Tarrant with 24 and 25. But you know what? Numbers like that don't matter as much because of the volume. Let's look at the rate. So, the CDC and NACO, the National Association of City and County Health Officials, and the Council for State and Territorial Epidemiologists, they all recommend one epidemiologist per 100,000 residents. You can see, Collin doesn't quite meet that metric. Tarrant and the US both exceed that. Dallas is just shy of that target. Denton is far below that target. We've taken a very, very conservative approach, asking for new employees. We just asked you for one this year, and it was, again, recommended for this budget. But you can see, for about the next five years, I'm going to continue to ask for one of these positions just so we can meet a target. And honestly, I think Collin and Dallas are continuing to add as well. So, we're going to remain behind with my conservative approach of asking for one per year. But we are far below. So, this really speaks to workload, okay? And this is, this is just an objective evaluation of what's recommended in the workload that our staff is going through. We talk about epidemiologist one, so this is for an Epi-two position. But just to note, our Epi-one position is below the average salaries of others. Not necessarily the entry-level salaries, but the average salaries. And the reason we talk about average and not necessarily entry is because in the memo, I want to show you, we've had a 100%, 103% annual turnover in this position. Okay? So, we talk about retention in the county. I have other positions that have a 2% and a 3% turnover. This position has a 100% turnover. And we do voluntary exit interviews, and so, we ask, "Why are you leaving us? Where are you going?" And where they're going is those bar graphs I just showed you. I can tell you six different names that work in public health departments in the metroplex that ain't us. We trained them. We made them hyper-competitive. Some went on to make $20,000 and $30,000 more in hospital systems, but some went to make $15,000 more at one county over. That's highly frustrating. We are really, people talk about the training ground. I can prove it. And I can prove it with some of these numbers. 100% of the voluntary exit, 100% of our exit interviews said they recommended a ladder for advancement, an Epi-two position. 80% said that lack of advancement was a factor in them quitting. I mean, these numbers really do speak for themselves. And when you look at the grade 13 versus a grade 14, if you look at a grade 12, which is what our Epi-ones are, many of them have a graduate degree, and they get paid a stipend. They get paid that incentive pay for a master's, okay? So, a grade 13 would get them a 5% raise. So, it's just one more grade, gives them 5%, but they lose their incentive pay because the Epi-two requires a master's, okay? So, basically, you get a promotion, but your net gain is $1,900. And again, I've shown you the graph where if you go in any of the surrounding counties, Collin, Dallas, Tarrant, you make $11,000 more. So, I'm merely asking for an additional grade, which gets us still below everyone else. I'm asking for the green. And so, that's why I come to you today. This is for one position, but we will be setting this position to move forward, right? This is, we need to set it correctly so that we can stop the hemorrhaging of staff out of our office to every other office. And I do mean literally every other office. They have gone to all three. And again, that 100% turnover, this is an opinion about why they're leaving. They're telling us, and I'm asking you to work with us. Let's listen to them when they tell us why they're going. And again, I'm wanting to show, in the green here, it's not like we're going to be paying the most in the metroplex, right? I'm just trying to get us marginally competitive moving forward.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Are you saying this was a brand-new...
Yes, ma'am.
Position.
We haven't had this position before. Yes, ma'am.
That's what you're asking for. Gustavo, you said it at...
So, Mr. Richardson sent it to us. We did the ranking. Based on the directive of the court of being at 90% of market, the pay grade 13 is what it is. I completely agree with Matt that he is losing people, because he is losing people. That is completely true.
Okay.
So, the real issue here is, we want to... we want to go above the market a little bit. And I I believe that, and when I say above, I'm talking about the directive from the court.
And it's and it's, this would not be above the market.
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, but then why are we doing it at a fourteen?
Uh, we included the position based off of the pay grade recommended by HR. So, HR recommended the pay grade at thirteen. And Matt is appealing to get it at a fourteen. And we always uh include the new positions based off of the pay grade recommended by HR.
And you recommended it?
Thirteen.
But is it?
Based on the directive of the court, but.
To be below market.
To be below market. It's not.
To be at ninety percent of market.
At least ninety percent.
So, what we're doing now would prevent some of the things we just talked about. So, but do you?
Then why are we losing?
I mean, we're still gonna be below.
No, 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 but so you you say you recommended it at thirteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Why would it to fifteen come in? Did I hear fifteen?
Fourteen. Fourteen.
Well, see, I'm way above you right now.
We'd take it on a Tuesday, though.
Okay, okay. And this is a very new position.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time you've.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
I I do have a question, though. So, are your numbers for market different than what Matt's showing us? Because it doesn't look like and did you, and and did you count in the whole master's required piece?
So, the issue is, we are doing starting salaries. Matt is also compounding the actual salaries. So, that can deviate the the numbers a little bit because he loses people all the time. So, he's always on the lower end of the scale.
I can't ever get to a mid, I can't ever get to a mid-range, right? They lead me too fast at a hundred percent turnover.
So, so these aren't, yeah, the the salaries are average salaries that you're showing, not 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 entry level salaries, got it?
Yes. Now, their tenure is um, their tenure is about four years. I can't get to two years. My tenure is sixteen months. My current tenure for Epi is sixteen months.
Right. I can tell y'all that as we went through COVID and the years coming out of it, I mean, the the turnover has been tremendous in this capacity. We could never, we could never even, in these these Epi's. And it's um, you're competing with uh your fellow health departments and also your hospitals. So, there's two markets there that are that are competing. And so, it is a very competitive market and I'm not so sure a philosophy of being below market on ninety percent with the turnover that we're experiencing makes good business sense. Just just saying.
I I also would note.
I agree with you.
I mean, why are we going through all this? Just to, why are we, why are we the training field for all these other people?
And and I would also note epidemiology is pretty unique in that no one else in Denton County does this job.
Right.
The individuals that you employ as Commissioners Court, no one else at the county is a disease investigator, not a hospital system, not doctors' offices. These individuals are sort of the tip of the spear when it comes to telling you, the court, the status of the population's health in the precincts that you represent. These people are the ones that have the answer. And to to train them to be the to be the Navy SEALs of epidemiology and then for them to go be deployed in another county is highly frustrating.
So, another question. Uh, so you may have said this, Matt, but just to, it's a new position and so how how does the progression work for if you're an epidemiologist?
Well, and the progression is still very much um, it's minimal. The word chart is pretty shallow, right? So, you're gonna have an Epi-one, masters not required.
Right.
This Epi-two position would be masters required, and then it goes to Chief Epidemiologist, which we share right now. And Juan, he's a Chief Epidemiologist and our Assistant Director. In the years coming, I'll ask to split those. I did not ask for that this year. But we're trying to get a progression ladder so that they'll stay. And we won't have a brain drain every sixteen months as it is today.
I get, uh, thank you. I'm just, I guess what I'm asking is if you is is it just, hey, when they're doing well, you're gonna ask for a promotion? Or is it, is there a set, like, is it, hey, you've been here for eighteen months, now you're gonna move to to, I'm I'm trying to figure that part out.
That's a good question. Here's my intent. We got this Epi-position this year, um, if pending your approval. I will be asking for another Epi-two position next year, 'cause again, I'm trying to slow play this. But I'm trying to fix. I'm trying to fix this, right? I'm trying to fix this. So, I'm slow playing it. I'm gonna ask for an Epi-two. That would be two Epi-two positions, and they would be competitive. So, it's not an automatic. We will have two Epi-two positions and we'll want you to mature in place and gain experience and expertise. And if you do, and if we have attrition, you can move up. But I'm gonna ask for another one next year to try to uh to have a graduated, but there's no guarantee. There is no guarantee.
Right, got it.
Yeah, but that's the intent. You'll be seeing that from us next year again.
Okay, other questions for Dr. Richardson? Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that.
All right. Let's go back. Okay, get next. Alejandro?
Okay, so that concludes the three specific um appeals or discussions regarding departments. And so, the next thing on the agenda are the miscellaneous discussion items, and we have a few of those. Uh, the first one on the agenda is a tax rate update, which um I recommend we circle back around to. Uh, so we can uh skip that one for now. Uh, the next one on the agenda is a discussion regarding prospective one-time compensation adjustments for uh employees. So, if you look at the
Where's that?
Uh, reference tab. Look, look under the reference tab on page R twenty. You'll see a chart that shows three different scenarios.
Wait, where?
Uh, it's gonna be.
Under reference?
Which?
Yes, sir.
Oh, under reference.
It's under reference.
Got it.
It's the last couple pages under reference.
Yeah, I was just looking for where the Rs were. Got it?
R twenty.
Uh, uh, R twenty, under the reference tab.
Okay.
And so, you have three different scenarios listed on here. Um, one of them is a one thousand one-time compensation adjustment. The second is a two thousand one-time compensation adjustment, and the third is a four thousand one-time compensation adjustment with the um uh financial impacts listed to the right of them. One is a scenario without elected officials and the other is a scenario with elected officials. Um, and I'm going to defer to Commissioner Williams on this item.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, the reason I asked for this to be put in place uh or as a suggestion is um, this would kind of tie into what the constables are asking about as well, okay? I think part of this would help tie over some of the employees that uh may be wishing they were gonna get uh a a change in their pay structure. And to give a one-time, and it and it's, gotta be very careful how you say it. I wanna make sure I s- read it properly. Hold on.
Kate calls it a one-time.
Prospective one-time compensation adjustment.
Yeah, thank, thank you for saying that. Um, which is not an unheard of thing to do. Uh, I think it's, it's probably never been done here, which um um is fine, obviously. In the private sector, we're able to give bonuses. We can't do that, obviously, in this in this world uh that we work in now. So, the the options are are there from the, from, basically, it's a one-time type deal. It's not a guarantee going forward. It's, there's gonna be certain areas that will um that would be, possibly could be excluded from it if if so the the uh Commissioners Court agrees to. One of the big questions was, are elected officials allowed? So, we had to ask. And we did um go to our council for that. And John, do you have anything on your mind right now to explain how we're able to or not able to do that for elected officials?
And for employees?
Yeah, for employees as well.
So, there's no prohibition to give that to elected officials? That's up to the court. And the only um.
And it's fine for employees?
And it's what?
It's certainly fine for employees. So, the, so the Attorney General's Office um ruled in twenty twenty-one that retroactive one-time bonus payments by Commissioners Court would constitute extra compensation, and that would be prohibited under Article Three, Section fifty-three of the Texas Constitution. However, a prospective bonus approved prior to rendering of services would not violate the Texas Constitution. So, if you approve such a bonus now to be paid in FY twenty twenty-five, you can do that for county employees of some amount. And uh you can certainly include some or all elected officials, and that's, that's a core decision.
Can I, can I?
No, no, please do.
Can I ask a question about that? So, if it's prospective, does that mean, and I'm not saying we would necessarily do this, but oftentimes in the private sector, you might prorate or not, like, if you show up the day before the 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 one-time pay is given, then you get prorated or you don't get it or that kind of thing. Is that, would that then be prohibited under this? If we wanted to do something like that?
No, I don't think it's prohibited. I would, I would definitely consult with the county treasurer as far as how you wanna implement it, whether you wanna do it, you know, on a certain, like, January one of twenty twenty-five, or you wanna do it on October one of twenty twenty-four, or you wanna phase it into thirteen payments, twenty-six payments, something like that. Um, but I I I guess you end up, if you give the bonus um upfront, then obviously you could have people that can get the bonus and not uh, you know, complete the year of employment, but they still get the money. But it's also the same way for employees that are capped in their
They get something.
Employees that are capped and they get the uh the one percent payment in a lump sum. I mean, if they decided to retire a month later, they're still, I guess, you know, once they get the lump sum, they get the lump sum, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that.
No.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest what we would, you know, prorate it out over a bunch of months.
No.
This is a one-time deal uh to.
I would just pick a date that uh date certain, whether it's uh
Yeah.
You know, early, early in the fiscal year or holiday time or uh after the first of the year, whatever, whatever the court uh
Well, I'm, I'm.
Deals like they would do.
Yeah, I'm glad that Commissioner Williams had this. I was, I was a proponent of something like this and have uh used it in the past, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a good retention tool when we, where we have the funds to do it. Obviously, this is not the kind of thing that we commit to for future. It's one, this is one time, which is why we call it that, right?
I don't think anybody's gonna complain.
Right. And but I do think that, I do think if you give it at one time, it's, it's a more that's a more impactful thing than just letting it just drop into their paycheck over a year.
Well, and and I'm, unfortunately, Matt got out of here before we caught him, but I wanted him to kind of, I'd like to, I wanted him to explain what's going on for the state of Texas is is gonna be doing
For the WIC, for the WIC employees.
For the WIC employees, a four thousand dollar uh one-time payment and um which I'm looking at it going, okay, then this is a perfect time for us to piggyback on that same type of scenario.
But but not all of the state employees got that. The teachers across this county didn't get anything.
They got zero.
Oh, no, and I'm not suggesting to, yes.
There was a targeted, there was a targeted retention effort. Commissioner Evans is another hand.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Falcon, I'd like to respectfully disagree with you. Having had a similar situation in my own business where I gave a Christmas bonus every year, and this one person who was a bit of a problem took that bonus and then left the next week. I'd like to see if we do this, let's make it not just retention uh or not just a reward, if you will, but also retention. If you have a thousand dollars and you get five hundred of it now and another five, the rest of it six months from now, which will put us also in another budget cycle. And we can see if it's working and if it's something that we may wanna continue or perhaps even increase the following year. I mean, human nature being what it is. If you get it all upfront, what's your incentive to stay?
No, I I I think there is that. I um
Did you?
Oh, did you have, I'm sorry, Bobby. Go ahead.
Well, I don't think a thousand dollars would make that much difference whether the person would leave or not.
Right.
But, you know, I don't, uh, you know, and I haven't made up my mind on this. But I wanna recall, remind the commissioners that it's not that we have not been given five percent raises and six percent raises one year since nineteen, since, since two thousand and twenty-one almost.
Absolutely.
So, I, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea, and I'm still thinking on it, but I wanna remind everyone that we have not been slack in giving raises. Where um our citizens and in the community have not been getting these raises. So, I don't feel guilty if I don't give a thousand dollars because I know that I've been given five percent, six percent one year for the last four years. So, I just, but I haven't made up my mind. Okay?
Fair enough, but did you, were you gonna say something else? Or Kevin, you were gonna say?
I was, but if Commissioner Evans has got something.
That's okay. Um, I do understand what you're saying, Commissioner, and you're you're exactly right. I would say that I certainly would not apply it to elected officials.
No.
Uh, I would only apply it to the actual employees and not the elected officials.
I'll just say that we I don't know what, how I think about this. I have lots of questions about it. But culturally, we have treated all of our elected officials as employees.
Well, I didn't give them a raise one year.
And, right, but so we we have treated all of those uh try to keep treated our workforce at the county uniformly.
Judge, I do need to make one comment. Um, we would have to research the judicial salaries
Yeah.
and how something like this would affect them. We have, we have not done that. And I'm not trying to slight the judges, but anytime that we anytime that we make some changes uh with their compensation, theirs is all tied to the statutes, and so that's why we gotta go back and pull the statutes and look.
Sure. And I will say that there's, when you're paying a workforce, there's obviously your retention efforts that you may be talking about, but there's also the recruiting as well.
Yes.
And so, would it, I mean, this is just a question, would it be better to spend that money on a pay plan that is documented so when Matt is, others are trying to recruit, that that's reflected? If you're adjusting pay scales and so forth, those are reflected, those, so that that helps with the recruitment effort. When you're, when people are shopping to which locate, where would they like to work? And in Denton County's, money is being invested in the pay plan versus a bonus that may happen one year, may not. It's not as reflected as as investing that money in the pay plan, which is uh keeping us competitive publicly. It's a public facing compensation that would be able to be, um, people could reference and and as we're comparing with others, you know, so. I mean, and then there's years, I mean, years that may not be good, and then you're not doing it. And then, I mean, so there, I mean, there's, there's that, and so.
In fact, you've made an excellent point. Uh, if you give uh more money upfront, like in the recruiting, have we ever cut the salaries later on? I don't remember that. Whereas this, being kind of a bonus, we're already saying it may or it may not happen again next year. If, I I like your idea of putting it into the recruiting part, but just keep in mind, that's not a one-time deal. That's gonna be something we have to keep up year after year, whereas this is a one-time thing.
And Commissioner Evans, and you said exactly what I was gonna say is that one, I, 'cause I I do think we wanna be careful about not uh limiting our keeping up with the Joneses, if you will, on the salaries. But but I think that it's also when we have um, if we are, we have some ability to do it one time, I think it's, it's it's good to be able to share that with the employees. Um, and there are absolutely, there may very well be, this is not something that they should come to expect because it's, you know, on other years, there may not be excess funds. So, um, I think it's one of those where you.
Think of it as, this is employee compensation for work to be performed in FY twenty twenty-five.
That's right.
So, and if the county treasurer is listening to what I say, it's what she says that matters.
Yep.
Right. Thanks for your
Thank you.
your input. Yeah, I just, uh, I'm sorry, Judge.
Oh, go right ahead.
Yeah, I I just, thi- this kind of ties in to another segment we'll be into when we get there, and so I'll refer back to it a little bit, but
Which one?
Thank you, Judge. Wh- when it goes into the uh, what we're looking at as far as the, is it the very ne- next thing, I guess?
Yep.
I don't know if it's the next in order of.
Whoa, I don't.
Yes, it's, it's right on the next page. So, if you wanted to um
Just kinda roll it in.
go on to that next item, which is just the discussion of uh regarding salary increases. That's just right on page R twenty-one
Okay.
of the reference tab as well.
Judge, do you mind if I?
Sure. Oh, I thought, are you gonna lay it out?
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. So, we um, here you'll see a uh basically a few different rows. The first row shows the five percent, which is what we included in the recommended budget. And uh the next two rows shows two scenarios for doing a six percent. which is either a financial impact of 1.5 million or 1.3 million. It just depends on whether you do more of a, what we've called a slide or more of a cola. Um, and then a scenario for a, um, 7%, which would be a $2.9 million additional impact on top of what's included in the recommended budget.
Williams?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. Um, so obviously, I didn't want to say this when we had the constables in here, but part of this...
I bet they're watching. Yeah.
Well, no, what I mean by that, it wasn't the time to say it. It's why I shouldn't have said it. I just want to be respectful of, of their situation.
Sure.
Um, so I kind of look at it and say, if we are able to, uh, which I'm confident that we can financially do a 7% for the employees, and then we have a one-time payout, uh, as well, that, that compensation will, will tide a lot of these concerns that we're seeing, uh, over until we do get through our compensation study for not just the constable's office, but for a lot of the other offices that are involved here. And that's another significant raise. And I, I agree with all of you that have said, since I, I've been fortunate enough to be on the, the commissioner's court, um, it's been nice. It's been like Santa Claus every year, right? We're able to really give, uh, what we've been able to give to the, to the employees. When, you're right, some other places haven't. So we've been very fortunate, and I think we're still very fortunate. And so I look at it and say, if we can do the seven and some type of one-type, one-time, that, that really will, um, complete, in my mind, us to, to get through this study, whether it's going to be able to be completed all the way through the 2025, or some completed 2025 that goes into the budget in 2026. I would hope that we're able to roll the whole thing out in 2026. But it may be patched, you know, how we end up doing it because depending on how much it's going to cost, right? So this would, uh, be an immediate impact for all those without having to do a lot of other adjustments. So that's my reasoning behind it. Thank you, Judge.
Okay.
Other comments?
Did I understand you to say that you wanted to combine, uh, the page 20 thing, which will be a one-time $1,000 or whatever, plus the second? So that we're doing two different actions?
Y- yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So...
Commissioner Faulkner?
So, so I, um, I guess the only thing that I, I want, I would love to, um, do what we can for, because we need to, our employees are our number one thing. The only thing that I want to, I need to understand better, and I think that we'll go over some of these, is the, now we have the certified role, right? And so we have our, um, we have our, obviously, we, we want to cut our tax rate because we, A, we need to in order to not have a voter approval, right? And so, um, there's some of this that I need to understand better before I can really dive into that 100% is understand where we are in the income side, the revenue side.
Yes, Commissioner. So with the one-time, um, with the one-time compensation, so that obviously that will come from the drawdown of fund balance.
That one, that one I know.
And, and so for the, anything that's going to increase the recurrent expenses, um, you essentially right now have, uh, you're able to increase the M&amp;O side of the budget, which is basically anything in the budget, aside from the debt service budget. You're able to increase that by an additional 857,000. Uh, so at that point, you hit the, the, the 3.5% cap. So that means that you can't, you can't increase the budget any more than that without, um, triggering an election. So what you would have to do is decrease the budget in other areas if you want to make up that, that total necessary, uh, impact for an additional 1%.
So, um, it, it certainly doesn't, it's, it's, it's not, so, so, yeah. So, so i- if we, just, just so that I'm understanding, so like even if we wanted to go to 6%, that costs us, um... Yeah, that, yeah, it's not, well...
Yes, the total, the total...
The variance to is 1.5, it's 1.5 million.
On top of what's in, yes, sir.
Um, so we don't have that without adjusting contingency or other items in our budget, right? With, without a vote going over the, but I don't think, I don't think anyone here wants to go over a voter approval, right? Do we? Okay. I certainly don't.
Right. You, you can increase the budget by an additional 857,000, and then that's when you'll hit the cap.
Right.
And then so anything, um, above that, you'd have to decrease the budget somewhere else uh, to come up with that additional difference between the 1.5 million and the 857,000 that you still have available for the budget.
Okay.
The people are appealing already.
Right, right.
We may have to use some of the...
Some contingency for those.
I think we need to stay at the 5%, that's my opinion.
Well, and, and I don't know, um, Judge, there's another item I'd like to, to bring up about salaries and everything. I don't know if this is a fair time to, to do that. So I've had Alejandro's team looking. So we, um, and we've taught, so there is, um, we have for quite a few years, I think maybe even longer than Bobby's been here, have been, uh, we have been paying, uh, county and, we paying, we have been, we've had county employees, three of them, uh, who are actually working at the DPS offices. They are full-on county employees, uh, Gustavo's looked and, and I've gotten surprising. And they, uh, but they, they, they don't, technically, they don't report to us. I think you get a, a once-a-year letter or something, right, Gustavo?
They report directly to DPS.
They report directly to DPS. I have had some very good conversations with, um, the, the chief trooper of the North Texas region, uh, who has been very helpful. Um, because I, we didn't actually know a lot about this because it's been going on for a long time. Apparently, what I understand, talking to some other county officials at TAC and those kind of things, is that years and years ago, there was kind of an ask, and I mean, maybe 30 years ago, I don't know, 20 or 25, a long time ago, if you all could help support DPS with some administrative help. So we, this has happened many, some counties did it, uh, some didn't. This is not a, this is not a state mandatory thing. And by the way, other counties have, many of those have pulled out of that program since then. But we are spending, uh, 230, what would be this year, $230,000 um, on DPS employees, essentially. They're our employees, but they're not our employees. And although, I mean, we're seeing that we have, we have people asking for dollars for, for true, I mean, I, I'm not trying to say they aren't true county employees. They are technically are true county employees, but they're not doing our work. They're doing DPS work. And I, I think, based on everything, that we ought to transition out of that situation um, and put that money, um, to our people, or give it back to taxpayers, but not, and, and let the state do what the state needs to do, um, on DPS. I am not interested, I don't know those, um, three employees. I'm sure they are all very fine people. Um, I'm not interested in putting anybody out of a job and on the street like in October.
And find a job for them.
Um, but...
If the state didn't take it.
Yeah, we, I have talked to the trooper and just asked that question, like what would happen if we were to get out of this program? And, um, and by the way, he, Jeremy, has been so gracious in everything. This has not been, he's not been defensive. He's been, hey, we have been thankful for all that the county's done, but he says, we understand. I mentioned that, you know, there, there may be other public safety people that we've had to say no to, and he's like, this is not a competition. I do not want you all, so anyway, but he said, uh, this is not surprising. He's like, we don't just have dollars assigned where we could just, in October, um, start paying them. Uh, but he said, we do have openings occasionally, but we also, Alejandro and his team put together, uh, we have many openings that are in that same grade level, um, that they might be able to... So I guess I just am saying, I think it's that time for us to figure out how to transition out of supporting DPS, um, administrative clerks.
Okay.
And ultimately, that'll let us have that $230,000 for our employees or to give back or whatever it is.
And are they processing cases that we, we receive benefit, uh, benefit from?
So, yeah, so they, they do the processing. But one of the things, and I, again, and by the way, uh, they've offered to come speak to us if we like, and we can do any of those things. Um, but I said, well, what happens if we don't? He's like, look, we are, we are gonna, we are going to serve Denton County. Like that is our job. There will be, uh, we will figure out, we'll get it done. He's like, we've been very grateful for what you do. But he's like, I'm like, so I, I just need to understand if, you know, is he gonna...
Where does the work go?
Yeah, he's like, we will figure that out. He, I, I was, I will tell you, very impressed with them. Uh, this was, they were not defensive, and they're like, we are going to support you. If you, if you decide to keep it, we're very happy. But if you tell me that you need that for your people, I understand that. He says, we will get the job done and we will, uh, do what we need to do. And there, and certainly, there will not be like, oh, well, we're, you know, you do that to us, and there's going to be some kind of retribution. They absolutely...
No, they need, they are in our buildings now that...
There's, uh, so, uh, my understanding is that, uh, one is at the Southwest Courthouse, uh, one is in Denton at a DPS office, and the other is in Carrollton at the DPS office.
Oh, you had one in Louisville.
Oh, so maybe...
You mean employee, or you mean?
Denton County, a Denton County employee.
Denton County, oh, okay.
The three Denton County employees, one Carrollton DPS, but one is in the Southwest Courthouse. The other two aren't even in Denton facility, Denton County facilities.
Okay.
When you say transition, uh, what period of time are you thinking about? Because saving this money would be...
It would be very helpful. I, I will say this, um, this is me. I, I see that as long as we are making a decision that we are going to get out of that, I don't mind using a little bit of our, our non-recurring dollars to help transition. You realize, you see what I'm saying? Because it's kind of the opposite of what sometimes happens when you, you're like, hey, we'll do this. It's only going to cost, this year we'll spend ARPA funds, and then what do you do in the future? This is one where we know that won't be required in the future, but if we need to throw in a little bit of money just to give us a...
Transition.
Something past October 1st to transition, I think that would be fair.
Not roll it into the rate, but use it out of paid for it, out of contingency.
Exactly. I, I think that would be fair. And Alejandro kind of gave me a...
Millions of dollars extra.
Yeah.
According to the state comptroller. So it's like they couldn't begin to pick up some of this, that's...
That's, that's correct, they have...
But they're not going to pick up our employees.
No, but if they want money, they're...
Good job, Kevin.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so that's something for us to consider, and that's... And that's 230?
$1,000.
230.
For the three?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you for looking into that.
Sure.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you for your help with that, too.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so back under general discussion, we also have a, an item for, uh, the discussion of preventative maintenance for county buildings. Uh, there is no, uh, backup, uh, for this item, but it is just a general discussion that I'll, um, also defer to Commissioner Williams or Commissioner Faulkner.
Which?
Uh, so this is on the agenda, but there is no backup, uh, for this, uh, discussion topic.
Under your reference.
I can speak. So mine, I think it's $250, is that correct? For our budget amendment? I think it's 250. So, so we, um, uh, we're, we are going to start our, um, our little meetings that we have on, on transportation. And, um, it's the first one that my precinct is done. So we, uh, we need a little bit of funds for that meeting. And so we've been, we've been to Bobby's meeting to kind of see how they go, and this will help us get that started. Isabel, I'm correct, right? That's what that's all about? No? Okay, sorry.
You mean what, Kevin, I'm sorry?
The, the budget amendment, I thought was so that we were... Because we were taking the money, shifting it out of administrative supplies, right? Different? Okay, sorry. Now I don't know which one we're talking about.
Yes, sir. So this is a discussion item regarding, uh, preventative maintenance for county buildings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about the budget amendment.
No, this is just the, uh, regarding, yes, just a general discussion. Uh, so currently, we have, um, just for reference, we do budget, uh, 1.5 million for, um, repairs and maintenance in the permanent improvement fund that, uh, facilities is responsible for, and they use those funds for general, uh, building upkeep. Um, but I think Commissioner, uh, Williams mentioned just adding a discussion item for, uh, putting some funds aside for, uh, specific preventative maintenance for county facilities.
So, yeah, so if I can on that, sorry. I thought we were going to budget amendment. So I might ask, the, I am very happy that we did our Gordian facilities, um, report. I know that that project got a little bit delayed because of some of, one of the, and the people inspected our facilities. I don't think we've gotten that back yet, Dale? Is that right? So that will actually feed a lot of what we actually need. Um, but I think that we know just from the inspection, I, I, I know I follow around that there's probably going to be a need for some of that funding, but that will give us an, a, a baseline and an ongoing, um, analysis of what really we need to be doing proactively, uh, as well as some of that's reactive on this first one. But what, Dale, do you remember what the timing is for that?
Before the report come out?
Yes, sir.
We're hoping, uh... Judge, commissioners, um, right now, we're hoping in the next couple of months that it's going to come out. We did have an issue with one of the gentlemen, the electrical engineer...
Yes.
Uh, that did the, his initial report. Uh, we're not quite sure what happened to him. He got very sick.
Yes.
And his information was, they couldn't access his information. So they had to send a second person out to come and reevaluate all the electrical for the county, which threw us behind a couple of months.
The timing off by a couple of months. So, okay. So we should have something in a couple of months, but...
Yes, sir.
We're going to need probably...
Yeah, Judge, if you don't mind, um, yeah, I, obviously, I think this is an important part uh, to maintaining all the assets that, uh, the citizens of the county operates and runs. Um, instead of, uh, of, you know, being reactive, I would, I think that it's, uh, in our best interest to be a little more proactive in understanding where all our buildings are, in the condition they're in, and putting them in a maintenance program. You know, whether it be the AC units, whether it be the, and what I mean by preventative maintenance program, which I think we have some of that with AC units. I'll use them for example, where, uh, you know, every three months, six months, whatever it is, you have an organ, you know, whatever, either your people or we have a, a contracted organization that comes in, goes through them all to make sure that they're up to, uh, the best operating, um, you know, best operating condition. And that needs to go on with everything. Your buildings as a whole, uh, your toilets throughout the whole place. I mean, e- everything should be on some type of preventative maintenance program where it's at least checked and looked at, and then the monies that are assessed that need to be put into that. You know, there'll be roofs that'll need to be replaced at some point in time. You should get the expected life expectancy of whatever roof on whichever building and put in here, hey, within 15 years, this roof's going to be, need to be replaced. So we're putting money back for those, those items throughout the years. So that's really what it, what it amounts, and that's, that's why that, uh, I'd ask to have something like this put on there is, so we put something more formal in place, because a million and a half's not going to obviously take care of the type of, with this many buildings and the size of buildings we have, there's no way that's going to be enough money to, to be preventive.
Correct, yes, sir. And, uh, I think, as you mentioned, the study, when it comes out, it's going to put us in a very good position to, uh, start a depreciation program, know how we need to work for the next five, 10, 15 years, where we need to be with our buildings and, and stay ahead of the curve, so.
Have you already started on that study? Have you already started on that study?
The study's almost complete, yes, ma'am. Should be, we should have it back in the next couple of months.
Okay, be sure you share it with all of us.
Absolutely, as soon as we get it, court will get it.
It'll help us be more educated on what we need to do.
Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you.
Okay.
The next item that is on the agenda is a discussion regarding the Briarwood property building budget. And that is on, you can find that under the reference tab, page R10. And that'll include the submission from, from facilities for that building budget, as well as, it should also include the final recommended budget for, for that building budget. And I'll also defer to Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the question was. Sorry.
Was it, were you wondering about an update on the study? We got so many studies we're working on these days.
Maybe that's, I, I, that very well could have been it.
This one, we do have the feasibility.
I'll be happy to give you an update on that.
Bill, I don't remember exactly what I was asking for.
What we did was, this budget was put in as a basic budget. This was basically a utility budget and mowing, and just some very basics without really any programming identified. We do have money contingency, and so I would anticipate in the next few weeks, we get the study back from Mr. Laniger, who's been working feverishly on it. He's been very diligent and detailed, and has been very communicative with me, asking questions and, and doing his research, not only here in the county, but across DFW and the state, and also some other sites across the US. And so he's with the National Association of Campgrounds and so forth. So his early preliminary assessment is very positive, and I'm very pleased about that. He is, it is not a complete document, and he looks to have that done here later this summer, and we could come back and have some further discussions about that. But, so we do, so that was kind of what we, we just did a basic minimal budget, and Dale helped us pull that together, just based on some actuals. I do think we could minimize some of the mowing, we can talk about that offline on some of that stuff. So the, I was over at the Master Naturalists. Kevin, you joined us over there the other day, and we were over there visiting with the 42 different projects that our Master Naturals were working on. And everywhere I went, people, this was over in the elections building, about two weeks ago, everybody, everywhere I went, people were excited and stopping me and excited about going out. They're actually doing some hands-on improvements and projects, so it'll be something great. So let's give you an update. I know we've all got different studies we're working on.
Perfect.
And I think that's great, and so that's kind of the update on that.
Judge, could I compliment Alejandro? This, this is the easiest thing to follow.
Oh, good.
Since I've been.
It's been perfected over many years, Commissioner.
Really appreciate it.
It's been a work in progress.
It looks really good, thank you.
Hey, you guys did a great job.
Okay, very good. Does that help?
Yes, sir, yeah. I'm sure, it was just trying to, exactly that.
You will have a discussion point.
Yeah, exactly.
We've all slept since then.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so at the very bottom of the agenda, you'll notice a discussion regarding fund balance, which I was speaking to Commissioner Faulkner about. And on page, under the reference tab, page R19, you'll see basically the, the chart for fund balance that I included as part of the recommended budget presentation. So kind of the only thing I wanted to mention on there is, just as a reminder, that any general fund, fund balance that you wanted to utilize in FY 2025, that does have to be budgeted for. So you do have to include it as part of the adopted budget. You can't start the budget year and then choose to, to utilize that fund balance for, for something. So if, if the intention of the court is to utilize some of that general fund balance, then it has to be approved as part of the budget process.
Could, we could have a allocation if we had a completely unidentified acquisition. We could put that in contingency, could we not? So it wouldn't be out of fund balance, and then take it out of a contingency. And just have it sitting in contingency.
Yes, we could. You're saying, take the money out of, use some of our fund balance and put it in contingency?
So we could avail ourselves of it statutorily?
That is correct.
Do you follow me?
Yep, yep, I asked that question, too, so yes.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, that's a good idea, to use some of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Members, do I have questions related to the fund balance?
It's a good problem to have.
Mm-hmm, it's better than the opposite.
Yep.
And what was our, what was our estimated interest income, Jeff, that you articulated the other day? So the nice thing about that fund balance is the interest earnings, now that we have interest rates again. Now that we have a thing called interest.
Yeah, the, just the general fund, I believe, was around $11 million. And total off-funds was right around 20 million.
Yeah, that's phenomenal.
Okay.
We won't be able to count on that for many more years.
Nope, but it'll take it as long as we can get it.
That's right.
Okay.
That's a good one, and I.
Is that all for your agenda?
There, there was one, just one last one, which is the, the very first one that we skipped. So that's gonna be under miscellaneous discussion, that's a tax rate update.
Yeah. Can you, do you have the latest?
Yes, so if you will flip under the appeals tab to page A73, you will see some, you will see an update on our tax rate calculation. So as, as Commissioner Faulkner had mentioned, yes, we did, the recommended budget was basically prepared based off of the last round of preliminary values. So after the certified totals were released, we have the final information needed. So based off of that, we're recommending to make one adjustment, which is to basically reduce the debt service paydown by the $15 million that we presented as part of the recommended budget, down to 10.8 million. So what doing, what that will do is basically keep us at the rate that we presented as part of the recommended budget. Because basically, based off the certified values, the, we lost about $2 billion in value, and that just pushed up the no new revenue rate higher. So what we want to do is reduce down the budget to make sure that we don't exceed the current rate. So our recommendation is basically to reduce that paydown by 15 million down to 10.8 million, as you see there at the very top. And so that'll bring us down to the recommended rate of 0.188006.
Repeat, can you mind repeating that, please?
Yes, Judge, that is gonna be 0.188006.
Page A73, he thought it. Yeah.
That's.
Okay.
And the no new tax rate is 0.180447.
Which is a huge, if we want, if we want to get there, that's a 12 and a half million dollar hit.
Seventy-three.
Actually, it's almost $13 million.
Yes, that would be, that would be right. If you wanted to get down to that rate, in addition to reducing it, what I'm recommending, you'd have to reduce the budget by another 12.7 million.
I can do that. Just turn me loose.
All right, why don't we why don't we take a 10-minute recess, stretch our legs?
Okay.
And then we'll reconvene in about 10 minutes, okay?
Very good.
Okay.
Need a 10-minute recess.